You're good.
Good morning. Today, March 16, 9:00 AM. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast Council Meeting. Before I call this to order, I would like to say that today I'm going to be your chairman due to the fact that Melissa Holland, the mayor, won't be here. Please join me with a hand to your heart and a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please, Virginia.
Vice Mayor Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Barbosa.
Here.
Councilmember Donca.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor Holland is absent.
Okay. Item D, public participation. Each speaker shall come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, and your three minutes will begin. You cannot speak about items at this time. You cannot speak about items in the agenda, as you will have a chance to do so when the item comes out. All comments and concerns, someone here should be directed to me, as I'm going to be the chair today. So we could start with the public participation. Please state your name to the record.
Robert McDowell, Palm Coast. Between rimfire and rolling sands, I counted this morning thirty-four, thirty-four brand-new concrete slabs that had been put down on the west side of the street, because there's no sidewalks on the left side. My questions are: How much does each slab cost the taxpayers? What is the life expectancy of the concrete? And who's doing the work? I just think that thirty-four slabs that had to be replaced within the last year, that's an astronomical amount of money. And that's only one block, from rimfire to rolling sands. It's only one block, and we had to replace thirty-four new slabs. Now, I think, and "think" being the key word, but I think the main reason why these concrete slabs are being, not holding up, is because we have borough or city vehicles riding on the sidewalks. And I don't know how much these little golf cart city vehicles weigh, but they've got to weigh three or four thousand pounds. So I think that either the concrete is of poor quality, or it's not properly being installed. I mean, I came from the north, and my firehouse was concrete floor. And I'm seventy years old, and that concrete floor is the same floor that was put down seventy years ago. So, and that's just only one street. So God only knows how many concrete slabs we've replaced. I know I've only lived here for five years, but there's got to be at least, at least a hundred or a hundred and fifty slabs. So, like I said, I want to know how much the slabs cost, who's doing the work, and what the life expectancy is of those concrete slabs, because maybe it's without using the right material. It's not like they're being affected by weather, because we don't really get cold weather. So if the city could get back to me, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Set your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Janie Holly, Palm Coast.
What was your last name?
Holly.
Holly, okay.
I come to you again in regards to the ordinance already unanimously passed to install a gate at Slowway in 325. I have recently done my own traffic counts over the past few weeks, and these are my unsigned typically results: 224, 21, 10:43 AM to 12:00 noon; 48 vehicles, or one vehicle every 1.6 minute; 37, 21, 12:49 to 1:49 PM; 43 vehicles, or one every 1.4 minutes; 315, 21, 108 to 208 PM; 37 vehicles, or one every 1.62 minutes. This averages almost 500 vehicles in a 12-hour span. The 1980 census had the population of Palm Coast is 2,008, 37. The current population is over 94,000. You know, by 2030, we're going to probably be over 100,000 people. Palm Coast isn't a sleepy little retirement area anymore. It's a city incorporated by a margin of 2 to 1 in 99. As life moves on and the older citizens die, more people are moving in. These are not all retirees. They are younger couples with children looking for a nice, safe place to raise their families. Keeping access via Slowway continues to hinder that safety. Installing the gate as planned can go a long way to ensuring that we, the residents, are safer. There's someone I call Kubota Guy, who makes daily trips through the neighborhood in a large truck with a trailer hauling a kobo tobacco. During my time outside yesterday, he came through four times. This is only one example. I must stress the point again. I am home 99% of the time, and unless it's bad weather, I'm outside with my dogs while they play. I see the large vehicles. I hear the excessively loud radios, which is a new thing. I see the large revving, I see the vehicles. I hear the revving of engines. I know more about the traffic through there than anyone else, because I live with it on a daily basis. I don't know how many times I have read posts of people regarding car break-ins and porch pirates. County Road 325 is an easy escape route for anyone coming up from the south wanting to cause mischief. Installing the gate would eliminate that escape route. I further implore you to continue with the ordinance already passed and install the gate.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I want to talk again about the traffic on Florida Park Drive. That traffic is just getting more and more harmful to the residents every day. And it just seems like there's inability to understand the really harm that it's doing to residents. We're wearing masks to protect ourselves against the virus. Okay, that's, the virus is airborne. Over on Florida Park Drive, we have what I consider like a virus, is the automobile fumes, the dust, and the, and well, the noise is not, is airborne, but it's not entering our system. So we, we, we protect ourselves against the virus, but we're not going to protect ourselves against automobile fumes. That doesn't make a lot of sense, when all the studies that are out there shows that leukemia, that leukemia in children is on the rise. And part of that is that it's already been discovered that part of it is doing, due to automobile fumes. So why do we want to keep Florida Park Drive so congested with traffic? Over 8,400 cars per day, 3 million cars per year. That's about one-tenth of the population of Palm Coast, if it's 80,000. So we've got a lot of, lot of traffic on that road. When I asked the Sheriff Department about the tickets and stop, you know, stops and everything, if I'm reading it right, it seems like Florida Park Drive's got one-fifth the tickets of Palm Coast. Wow, in one neighborhood? I hope I'm wrong. You can check those figures with the Sheriff Department. But the new scientific study shows there's nanoparticles, and these nanoparticles get into your lungs and travel in your blood and attach to organs, causing problems. And so it damages the immune system. And while we've got more viruses and things coming in, we would like to protect us with some kind of mask, other, that, that is not that you wear, but somehow reduces the traffic on Florida Park Drive. It says in, I'll read this real quick if I can, but it says that the most damage is in 300 to 500 feet of homes. We're 60 feet from the roadway, so do something to protect us, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carr. Next speaker. Having none? Anybody in?
Yes, sir.
Public participation. Item E, minutes for March 2, 2021, business meeting, and March 9, 2021 workshop. Holland, stand a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for our March 2 and March 9 meetings.
A second. Those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Next item, proclamations. I'm going to ask Councilman Nick Clufus to read the proclamation regarding equal payday. Any representative here?
Morning, Vice Mayor, Council.
Morning.
Whereas more than 55 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequence of unequal pay. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time, year-round, typically earn 81.5% of what men earn. And research by the American Association of University Women show the gender gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas, according to a graduating-to-a-pay gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act of 2021, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas, according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than half a million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And whereas, nearly five in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. Whereas, fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas, fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases the future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, Wednesday, March 24th, symbolizes the time in 2021 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men in 2020. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby recognize March 24th, 2021 as equal payday in the City of Palm Coast, and do hereby urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. Adopted this second day of March 2021, City of Palm Coast Vice Mayor Eddie Branquino.
Thank you. Before I go into the next proclamation, I just want to say that I neglected to inform the speakers that, especially Mr. McDonald's, Mr. Carr, and Mrs. Alley, that see our city manager in regarding any questions that you have in this, because he probably has the answers. Most likely, he's going to have the answers.
I would love to meet with those residents and give them updates as to where we are on those issues, and then answer specifically Mr. McDonald's question.
Thank you, thank you. And once again, I apologize for neglecting to do that. F3, a proclamation regarding multiple myeloma awareness month. And Mr. Barbosa, would you be so kind?
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. Multiple myeloma, the second most common blood cancer worldwide, and the fastest-rising hermit, hermitologic cancer, is a disease in plasma cells in a bone marrow. It is called multiple, because the cancer can occur at multiple sites. And in the United States, life expectancy for those who are diagnosed with multiple myeloma ranges between four and 10 years, and with close to 13,000 people having lost their lives just this past year. Still with the challenges of applying therapies that include combinations of chemotherapy, radiation, and stem cell transplants, there is no, there's no known cure for the disavating for, of cancer. And for the past seven years, Ms. Hack and her family have advocated for the City Council to annually recognize March as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. Even as Jen Hack lived her most beautiful life until February 2020, she courageously continued to provide comfort and kindness as an ambassador for Palm Coast Multiple Myeloma Support Group. And her warrior-like participation in five experimental clinical trials made her a pioneer for guiding experts to see, to achieve, an early diagnostic implant that most effective, and safety treatments for myeloma patients. And thanks to people like Jenny Hack, Palm Coast is continually committed to increasing awareness of multiple myeloma and encouraging private efforts to enhance research, funding, and education programs. By the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of March 2021 be officially designated as Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. And the City of Palm Coast.
Thank you. Anyone here to receive this award? This? No?
Vice Mayor Branquino, just on behalf of the family, because I have grown to know Mrs. Hack and her family for the past seven years, they greatly appreciate the continuing support from City Council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Tell the family, thank you very much.
I will, thank you.
Thank them very much. Item G, G4, resolution approving the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2020, as presented by James Moore and Company.
Yes, just was going to introduce, say thank you, Honorable Vice Mayor. We have the presentation of the CAFRA this morning, Shannon Boone, our Chief Accountant from Finance, and a presentation from James Moore Income, James Halloran, and Webb Shepherd will be here to present, or will present the CAFRA today.
Thank you. Go ahead, you can start your presentation.
All right, well, good morning, Council. This is James Halloran with James Moore and Company. Glad to see all you guys. Enjoyed our one-on-one meetings last Thursday and Friday, so thanks for taking the time to do that for us. And of course, Shannon is here as well to answer any questions you may have on the comprehensive annual financial report. You know, we as your auditors are your independent auditors. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Webb Shepherd. He's an audit director with our firm, has worked on your engagement for a number of years. And so he's going to do the primary presentation today, and then, of course, any questions or anything you want to ask us after the presentation, we'll be more than happy to do. So take it away, Webb.
Thank you, James. Good morning, Council. Thank you for the opportunity. It's a pleasure to serve the city in honor. So without further ado, and my name's Webb Shepherd, for the record. I'm a director with James Moore and Company. And without further ado, we'll dive right in. Can I get the next slide, please? So I'm going to walk you through our independent audit reports with the emphasis there on independent. As James stated before, we are independent of the city. We're independent of management. We don't work for the city's management. We do work for City Council, so we like to emphasize that point. The first report there and the first bullet point basically states that we take a top-down approach to auditing your financial statements as prepared by management. It discusses our independence. Like I said before, we work for City Council, not for management. Our responsibility is to form and express an opinion that your financial statements are presented fairly, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next bullet point there is what we call the Internal Control Report. It's the one that's required by government auditing standards. And it discusses a number of things, and I'm sorry, I'll go back to that first bullet point. There was an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can provide. That is the report that you want to see, that's the opinion that you want to see on that report. So the next report there is the Internal Control Report required by government auditing standards. It discusses internal control that we consider internal control, but do not offer an opinion on the operating effectiveness of your internal control. So there were no material weaknesses in internal control that we identified. There were no material instances of noncompliance that we found during our audit. The third bullet point there is the federal single audit report. That is required anytime you have in excess of 750,000 in either state expenditures or federal expenditures. So you all had a little, little more than five million this year. That would do to the CARES funding and FEMA generator program. So you had a little more than five million this year. So you were required to have a federal single audit. And it's called a single audit, but basically it's a separate audit over those expenditures and those programs. During that, we found no material instances of noncompliance and no material weaknesses in internal control. So, the next slide, please. The next one there is the management letter, which is required by the Auditor General. Basically, the AG requires us to look at certain things, primarily your financial condition assessment and other key metrics. We had no comments there and no exceptions. We'll discuss the financial condition assessment a little more on the next slide, but basically there were no exceptions there. And again, that's the report that you want to see there, the best one that we can provide. The second bullet point there is the Investment Examination Report. And those are the page numbers throughout here. We have them listed in case anybody wants to go to the CAFRA and find those reports. They're listed here, and the page numbers, of course, like with that. So in the Investment Examination Report, basically we had no comments, and that report basically states that you're in compliance with specific investment policy statutes. The third bullet point there is, is your affidavit on impact fee compliance. That is basically management attesting that they're accounting and reporting on impact fee collections and expenditures. The last one there is discussing the CRA audit, which was the first time, basically the state is requiring us now to audit, or requiring you to have an audit performed on the CRA fund. We've always included the CRA fund as part of our financial statement audit, but now we have to audit it separately. So the CRA now has its own set of separately stated financial statements and all of the same reports that we're discussing here. So we had no comments and no issues, so all of the reports are basically the same as the one we're presenting here for the CAFRA, so. Read the next slide. Thank you. A little about your financial health. All funds are in compliance or exceed the fund balance policy, and that's discussed in Note 17 to your financial statements. Your overall financial condition assessment as required by the Auditor General, so they require us to basically take your financial information and plug it into a spreadsheet that they provide. It's a benchmarking spreadsheet, and it has basically about 25 key indicators and key metrics in there. So you, the city came out as inconclusive this year, which is not necessarily a bad thing. Inconclusive really just means average. You're roughly right around the middle there. So the three ways that it can shake out are favorable, or inconclusive, or unfavorable. So you're not favorable or unfavorable, they call it inconclusive, which really just means more like average. Get the next slide, please. The general fund there on page 41, a little about the different components of your fund balance. Basically, the components of fund balance in the general fund are nonspendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Mostly comparative there, except for increases in assigned and unassigned, which are mostly due to some projects that you all put on hold when COVID hit earlier in fiscal year 2020. And then you had some unexpected funding due to the CARES Act with the public safety salaries. There was about 1.5 million that came in due to that. You did have some planned property taxes increases. So between the increase there in the 3.3 in committed and the 3.3 in assigned, it's basically about 3.4 in expenditure savings due to some projects put on hold and those other increases that I just discussed. The committed fund balance, that's basically your disaster reserve, and the assigned fund balance there, that's you all sort of setting aside that money for use in next year's budget for those projects, basically. So the rest is pretty comparative year-over-year. And we'll move on to the next slide. We like to go over the general fund, being the primary, primary used fund in the city's financial statements there. The fund balance policy that you all have set is 10 to 20% of next year's budgeted expenditures. So we like to highlight that, basically at year-end 2020, you all were at 29%. So you're a little above the fund balance policy, not necessarily a good or bad thing. It's just the, the fund balance policy is a decision of, of the City Council to basically have some guidelines there. So with those, those increases that we saw, that's not unusual to see that, so just like to highlight that point. Move on to the next slide. Little about your business-type funds. We look at the unrestricted net position, because the, your business-type funds don't have the same categories as your general fund with the assigned and committed. So most of it is held in unrestricted, except for the restricted parts of it. But the unrestricted is basically the amounts that are available for use to meet your current needs. So mostly comparative here in all of your proprietary funds, except for the increase there in the stormwater fund, which again, you all are planning for future projects, some system improvements, and some equipment purchases in upcoming years. So that's what that increases there. And we'll move on to the next slide. A few highlights from this year. There is a $3.3 million deficit in Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. That is basically the initial cost of that project carrying forward from prior years when they originally set up that project. It, it, basically all those expenditures created this deficit in the fund. Now, it is shrinking every year by a little bit, and if all goes as planned, it will continue to shrink until eventually it will dissolve. Along with that, or basically along that thread, the advances to other funds is discussed in Note 8, and further discussed in Note 15, which is the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund that borrowed money from the utility fund. That was originally almost $5 million, and again, that is the same. It continues to shrink every year as that note gets paid down, or that advance gets paid down. The long-term debt of the city is discussed there in Note 10. In the current year, you all had $5.4 million for infrastructure improvements and equipment in the stormwater, and that was funded by two new revenue notes, 2019 A and E. In the utility fund, you all had that expansion design started, and that's currently being drawn down, the SRF funded about 300K of what will be the $1.4 million loan. But overall, the debt of the city decreased about $3.4 million. The subsequent event there, you all refinanced 2016 and 2017 bank loans. For a total savings there, $2.5 million, roughly thereabout. And I like to say congratulations on your Fitch rating. You all went from A-plus to double-A rating, which is no small feat, and really a testament to your finance department and the sophistication of your financial statements and your CAFRA. That, that really is a wonderful achievement for your finance department. So good job to Shannon and team, and Helena, and congratulations. So good job to Shannon and team and Helena, and congratulations. And we'll go to the next slide. Few more highlights for the year. The retirement plans is discussed there in Note 11. The volunteer firefighters' plan has, it carries with it a net pension asset of $1.6 million. The Florida retirement system has 10 employees, and that carries with it a net pension liability of $3.1 million. And then basically, the rest of your employees fall into the defined contribution plan, which is a pay-as-you-go type plan, and that carries with it a zero net pension liability. And we'll move on. So these are just a few of the additional services that we offer. So please keep us in mind if you need any assistance. And again, we appreciate serving the city. It's an honor and privilege, as always. Thank you very much. And we move on to the last slide for any questions.
Oh, who's that guy in the picture? That was a joke that we had there. Thank you for your presentations. I'll bring it back to this body. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to comment. Thank you for the extended time that you were willing to give me to be able to go over everything. And our finance department, thank you to Helena and Shannon and the overall just tendency to always be looking at every way that we can save money. I think the refinancing of our longer-term notes this year with the ever-changing equity markets was tremendous. And I think that they really deserve a hats off. So I just want to say thank you to our finance department. And thank you again for your guys' time that you spent with me.
You're welcome.
Anybody else has any comments?
Yes. How would you say our city's team is doing?
When you say a team, do you mean just on the finance side? Or what exactly are you referring to as team?
From all the stuff that we just went through, all the numbers?
Well, from the finance side, you guys do very well. You're, I mean, not many cities of your size are one preparing their own comprehensive annual financial report. The timing of when you're able to produce that financial report, especially with COVID this year, probably more than 50% of our governments are at least one to two months behind on where they typically are on gathering their information. So you guys transitioned very well to a COVID kind of remote workforce at times. And that's kind of part of your, your city has some advantages, being a young city. You know, just established in '99, you already had invested heavily in your IT technology side. And so that enabled you to make that switch very seamlessly for, you know, for your employee finance side. And I'm assuming probably in some of the operational areas as well. So that's unusual from what I'm seeing this year with our other clients.
And also, fellow people, what makes Palm Coast so good is that we are 0% debt-free.
You are 0% debt-free, correct, in your governmental side. So you have debt in your utility fund, in your enterprise fund. So your utility water and sewer, as well as stormwater, which are your enterprise funds, which operate more aligned with the business based off charges for services. And you do have debt related to your CRA. But there's no general obligation debt. As we, I don't remember if I talked with you about this, but it's very rare for someone to fill the city hall of your nature and sophistication in the last couple of years and have no debt from that. So that's an unusual thing. We don't usually see most governments able to do that.
I'm going to put you on the spot. Who's the number one city in Florida?
Probably everyone will say wherever they live, right?
Thank you.
I just want to thank you folks for the time you spent with us last week and answering all my questions last week, and I greatly appreciate it. And I'm satisfied with everything that you've presented. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before I take it to the public, I just want to ask you a question. I'm glad to hear that you just said yourself that not many cities, not many cities are in our shape. Most of the questions I had, you already answered them. One of them was, are we financially sound, sturdy? We are sturdy and financially sound. Like I told you, I was going to ask you this question. About how many clients do you have here in Florida?
Currently, we audit about 75 different governmental entities, from cities, counties, special districts, whether it's water management districts, you know, we do St. John's, Southwest, Northwest, and then various county cities as well.
On your travels, if I may, when you do all this audits, let's say you find anything unethical or fraudulent or corrupt, would you inform the council about that?
Yeah, the process we go through from an audit side, it depends on the level of where that fraud or instance occurred. So if it happened at more of a staff level, we, of course, would go to that department head. And then also from that, once we discuss with that department head, we would also then discuss that department head with the city manager and then ultimately the council, depending, is typically the process. Always, you always go one level above from where the fraud instance might have occurred to discuss with those people as well.
Have you found any of that here in Palm Coast?
Audit testing revealed none.
Thank you. I'm going to bring this to the public. Any comments or concerns regarding this matter? Hearing none. Do we have anybody? Bringing it back to this council, I entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against it? Item G5, a resolution of, approving the Colbert Landings PU determination. Do we have a presentation? Yes, thank you.
No, sir. This is Ray Teiner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. This item, this resolution is related to actually the second read for items H6 and H7. And it's a cleanup item, basically. You know, the rezonings that were approved at first reading at the first council meeting would take care of it, but this is more of a record-keeping that our attorneys like us to do a resolution because of one of the parcels was zone PUD. And mainly, this terminates that PUD development agreement.
So nothing new since the last time we processed that?
No, sir.
Anything you want to add to this, Mr. Morton, at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay, so any questions, comments, concerns? Let me take it back to the, let me take it to the public. Anybody has any questions? Anybody in there? No. So I'll bring it back to this, and I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution for the Colbert Landings PU termination.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay, the resolution passes. Okay, now, item H, ordinance, second read, Mr.?
Certainly, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is in accordance with the City Council of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. Amendment of the official zoning map for 156.6 acres, more or less. Certain real property described as part of tax parcel ID number 31231401010150. Generally located on the west side of Colbert Lane, approximately 0.8 miles north of Moody Boulevard, and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A. We're rezoning from master plan development or MPD zoning district to single-family residential 1 SFR, SFR1 zoning district and preservation, PRS zoning district, providing for conflict severability, providing for effective date. Counsel, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is the second reading of a quasi-judicial matter. As such, if any of you have had any ex parte communications on this matter since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Anyone?
None.
Mr. Ratchman, shall we, at the same time, present H7?
That's up to staff. Do you want to present these at the same time?
No, that's okay. We can do one another. We don't have a presentation. There was no additional information added from the last council public hearing where this item was unanimously approved. This is a rezoning from PUD to our conventional zoning of single-family residential 1 and preservation.
All right, then, Mr. Morton, do you have anything to add to this before I bring to this panel?
Nothing new to add. These are just coming back for the second read. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, concerns in here on this matter? I'll bring it back to the public. Anybody in the public who wish to comment on this matter? Morning, so state your name to the record, and you'll have three minutes after you say your name, sir.
Chris Martin. I was just wondering, when I looked at this in the past, it seemed like there were quite a lot of houses. I think it's like 500 or something in all. Has provision been made for proper drainage, particularly given the problems in Flagler with flooding before? Also, is there not any concern with, like, Flagler and Palm Coast and Vanelle all becoming one big blob like kind of Daytona and Ormond are? And, you know, it just seems that part of the charm of Flagler particularly is that it's kept kind of reasonably small. And it just seems there's this drive to develop every last bit of space. And as I say, logistically, there may well be problems with flooding, and this is going to exacerbate it, obviously. I know there's obviously incentives for having more housing with more taxes and stuff. But, you know, I think there needs to be a balance with the infrastructure, particularly with roads and services. And I don't see that this balance is always taken into account. So that's just my only point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anybody else has any comments or concerns regarding this matter? We sustain it, would you like?
Yeah, that's a great response. Again, this is, we are at the zoning level, kind of at the 35,000-foot level. This property actually is preserving over 40% of the site. So a lot of the houses or the single-family homes that will be constructed in the future will be not impacting those wetland resources. Once the zoning, if the zoning is approved, it goes through the subdivision process where we have not only city staff, but the St. John's River Water Management District and other agencies in Flagler County, because that's their road on Colbert Lane. We'll all be looking at it from a technical level. And as council members know, we have probably one of the highest ISO ratings for floodplain management in the state of Florida. We take it very seriously to get these houses out of the floodplain, make sure we have capacity and stormwater capacity, and transportation analysis is done at that technical level as well, so.
Okay, Mr. Teiner, that answers your question, Mr. Wilson. Thank you very much. Any other speakers regarding this matter? Anybody out there? I'll bring it back to this panel, and I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion for ordinance 2021, application 46100.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes unanimously. Item H7, Mr. Ratchman?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is the companion ordinance, again, second reading of this quasi-judicial matter. The title of the ordinance is as follows. In accordance with the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. Amendment of the official zoning map for about 136 acres, more or less. So certain real property described as part of tax parcel ID number 31231401010160. Generally located on the west side of Colbert Lane, approximately 1 1/2 mile north of Moody Boulevard, and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, from single-family residential SFR1 zoning district to single-family residential SFR1 zoning district and preservation, PRS zoning district, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for an effective date. Like the last item, counsel, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is the second reading of a quasi-judicial matter. So if there have been any ex parte communications that any of you have received since the first reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
This part, I don't know. All right. Any discussions in this matter?
I have none.
Anybody on the board? I'll take it to the public. Anyone from the public who wishes to discuss this matter? None? Right? I'll bring it back to this body and entertain a motion.
I will make a motion for the ordinance approval.
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against it? Okay, agenda item, aye, consent agenda. Items, excuse me for a second. What in one page?
Eight through 13, Mr. Vice Mayor.
There you go, eight to 13. I was looking at the wrong page. I'm sorry. Eight to 13. Does anyone here wants to discuss? Eight to 13 consent agenda? Anyone has anything to add here? Nobody? I'll take this to the public. Anyone in the public who wishes to talk about the consent agenda? Items eight through 13. Go on, anybody on? I'll bring this back to this body, and I'll entertain a motion to approve agendas, items eight through 13.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry. I second it.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? None, so it passes unanimously. Okay. I looked at you, not expecting.
Yeah, I spoke to him.
All right. Public participation, item J. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak at this point? You have three minutes, and that will start. Would you name? I would like to have the staff ready to answer any of the questions that I won't be able to. So please pay attention to the questions, if you don't mind. So will I. You could proceed by saying your name, and then after that, you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Carol Brassfield from Palm Coast here. I'm concerned about using our money for a pickleball arena or stadium. I believe this kind of spending should be brought to a vote from the citizens of Palm Coast through a citywide election. We also need to recruit corporate sponsors to help provide financing instead of using taxpayer money. Many of these pickleball arenas all over the nation are falling into disrepair because people lose interest in it or move on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, ma'am.
Hi, Chris Martin. Yeah, I heard recently about this pickleball thing as well, including the stadium. And I heard an estimate of possibly 17 million that this is going to cost. I mean, that's outrageous, really. I mean, considering Flagler was able to do four courts for 100,000 or so. I mean, I would suggest, rather than trying to make a big centerpiece like was previously tried at the European Village and is now laying in disrepair, you know, perhaps it would be better to have smaller pickleball courts dotted around the community. Like, I play tennis myself, and getting to Bel Air isn't the most ideal location, you know, for me. I would imagine for lots of communities, it would be nice to have something a bit closer, and I'm sure the cost would be a lot, lot less. I mean, this is our money. This is taxpayers' money that you're talking about. So, you know, if you're talking, you know, 10 million for the first stage and then who knows what for the next stage, you know, that is an awful lot of money that you're playing with. And there are some serious problems going on in our community, like, as I said before, with infrastructure. You know, we should be looking at how you spend that money. And as much as a sports person I am, I think you really need to consider what you're doing with that vast sum of money and think very carefully of better ways to spend it. And as I say, I think smaller localized projects, giving communities a little central thing. It's like with the town center thing going on. It's like, we're going to have this high-density housing. And originally, there was going to be shops and things, and now there's going to be nothing. You know, you need a focus for each community. Otherwise, it just becomes a nothingness. And, you know, there's pressure on the little services there are. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other speaker? Mr. Morton, 17 million dollars? You heard that someplace?
No, I've not heard 17 million. The presentation, the initial presentation last week puts it a little over 5 million. I don't have the exact number in front of me. And a mix of recreation impact fees and park dollars. There was a pie chart shown, which I don't have, but it's nowhere near 17 million. I'm not aware of Flagler building any, I don't know if it's talking Flagler Beach or Flagler County building pickleball courts. I'm not aware of any courts that, for, that went in for 100,000. I just can't answer that one. As far as Town Center, there is a retail and entertainment district that is planned and is in review and is coming, has always been planned to become. Additionally, with two universities that are locating, I think there's about 300 students in the first phase between the two. And again, that's an estimate until I get the final numbers from UNF. So Town Center is developing to the strategic plan, as far as I'm, you know, understanding. Is it lagging? As far as I'm, you know, understanding, is it lagging time-wise? And I think everybody did after the recession, but there are improvements happening in town center.
For posterity, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, um, Mr. Morton, these are non-general fund dollars. So the dollars that we're talking about allocating for this racket facility aren't dollars that we could otherwise pour concrete for on the other side of town or things of that nature. These are dollars that are tied specifically to expenditures that have to be spent on, for instance, parking, recreation, impact fees. Um, so just for posterity, if you don't mind, just reiterating that, that these aren't dollars that we're taking away from other general fund projects to make this happen.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for Mr. Morton. We're, the 5.6 million on the racquetball, pickleball thing, that's phase one, correct, Mr. Morton? There is a phase two, is there not?
I, I, there's a possibility for additional conceptual plans. The actual only phase we have in front of us that I'm aware of outside of the master plan, and if that's what the gentleman was referring to, then I was not tracking that conversation. Um, but yes, you are correct, there could be additional phasing. Uh, what we're dealing with today, and that's, that's where my confusion is, I guess.
Okay.
Is this what is actually proposed, uh, today?
And, and we don't have an estimate yet on what phase two would be, is that correct or do we? I don't know.
I'd have to check with, uh, Capitol. I mean, I'm sure they've probably wagged at something by this point and that's probably where the number's coming from.
Hey, that, that's what I'm curious about.
So let me, let me connect those dots and get back to Mr. Martin and the council. Again, when I thought we were discussing, and I apologize, uh, was what, what is coming back to council, which is that initial, you know, construction phase, to your point, uh, Vice Mayor, we showed the pie chart, I don't think we have it ready to pull up today, uh, with the various funding sources, the dollar, um, you know, where the different impact dollars were coming. There was that original transfer early on from the Ralph Carter money. Um, and you know, different, different sources that were putting that first phase of the project together.
And these impact fees, um, collected from, I, I assume developers, builders, um, which they pass on to homeowners, obviously, in their final sales price. These could be used for other items for park and recreation. I mean, we have some leeway with how we use them, correct?
Correct.
And they could actually even be returned to the developers and then passed back to the homeowners, the purchasers, if we didn't spend them, there's a timeframe there, correct?
There's a timeframe that Bill could, uh, educate us on. I, I'm not aware of a mechanism or that a builder would ever return those to homeowners. I don't know if that's ever occurred in the history of the country, but anywhere impact fee dollars are, are being spent. And I, you'd have to ask, uh, our attorney, I don't know if he's prepared to discuss the talents of impact fee dollars.
If the funds, the statutes have been amended and, and such that if, if impact fees are not timely, as defined in the statute, expended for the purposes for which they're allowed in the statute, then they are to be refunded to, to those, those entities that have paid the impact fees. Um, there is nothing in the statute, there's nothing that we would, the city would be able to do if there was such a refund to say, okay, we're giving you $10, you've got to return it to the buyers of your homes or your projects or your commercial buildings. That would be, it would, it would go back to the entities that, that paid the impact fees.
The builders, developers, whoever.
Correct, exactly. But there would, there would be tie-in, is what I think is important to understand. It's not like legally, either the state or the county or the city, no local government can say to those builders when they get the refunds, you're going to give this back as a refund to your.
But, but it would go back to, to private enterprise if nothing else.
It would.
And what, what does timely mean? I'm confused about that.
Well, it means that within, I, I, and I, and I have to go back to the statute, but I believe it's around five to seven years that, that the monies have to be spent from the time that they are received. Uh, uh, they just can't be kept on the books forever. And that's why all local governments, you know, they tickle the, the receipt of these funds and then, and they start the process of creating, uh, plans, like the City of Palm Coast has for, for projects. And, and again, I think it's important for purposes for the, for the council and the, the public to understand that, that impact fees can only be used for new projects. You can't use impact fees just to maintain existing projects. You have to, you have to expand, in other words, you have to expand your facilities with impact fees. There has to be something new. We wouldn't just be able to resurface the tennis courts. We've got to build something new, that's what the statutes require.
Or return the money.
Right, exactly.
Thanks.
All right. Public participation, we don't have any other speakers, anybody out there? No? Let's move on to the next, uh, item, which is discussion by city council on matters not on the agenda. We could start to my left.
I have nothing today, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Uh, I have a question for, well, more for the attorney to explain to people. This is a question I get. So when a developer brings a project out here and everything, there's no complaints about it, um, everything, uh, is okay. And we were, if the council were not to vote for it, what would happen?
Well, okay, that's, that's a, that's a big question. It's a big question, I'll try to answer it in a, in a, in a big picture.
It's kind of just saying if, if we were to vote against something and everything was right.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's probably a better way to say it. I mean, our land development code, the city's land development code, like any other local government, has standards that apply to a landowner who wants to come in and do something to build something on their property, whether it's a commercial building or a subdivision or a duplex or a single-family home. They apply. And then our land development code says, okay, if you're, if, if, if you're going to get that permit, if you're going to get that development order, that's the word that, that the statute uses. If you're going to get that development order, you have to meet these standards. And then there's a public part of it. That, you know, all of that which I've described so far is administrative, it's executive. There is a whole bunch of steps that a developer goes through. Meeting with staff, meeting with, uh, stormwater, meeting with utilities, meeting with fire rescue, you, meeting with the school district to make sure that, that we're not creating an impact that, that our systems can't absorb, if you will. But then there's a very important step, which is the public step. And that's where, and it doesn't apply to everything, but like this, this afternoon, excuse me, this morning, we had two public hearings, they were the nature of quasi judicial for some rezonings. And our land development code, as well as the Florida statutes, require that the public have an opportunity to, to, to hear what's happening to their community. Now, to your point, because there are legal standards that are, that apply, not just in our land development code, in our comprehensive plan also, but also general guidelines in the, in the case law and, and the statutes that apply. This, these are quasi judicial hearings, that means that you're, you're sitting up here kind of like a court, kind of sort of quasi judicial. That means that unless there are, unless there is competent substantial evidence, that's the, the specific words that are being used by the courts, for this council as a jury, if you will, that you find that somehow that applicant doesn't meet the standards, then the courts say, and the law says, that they're legally entitled, they being the developer or the applicant, to receive that development order. So that's why we have these public hearings, is to give the public and the applicant the opportunity to present to you facts, testimony, evidence, substantial competent evidence, to make sure the staff is correct when it submits to you this matter, which is an application for your consideration and approval. And staff will make a recommendation or not, that the application complies with the standards and meets all the tests for the rezoning or for the replating or for the variance or whatever, whatever is being requested for land development. But to your point, if, if, if there's no evidence, if there's no substantial competent evidence to allow any quasi judicial body to decline to deny an application for, for a development order, then there will be a legal challenge. And the appellate courts can find that there was no competent substantial evidence to support your denial. And they will reverse the decision. And it'll come back to this body or any other body that, you know, in that litigation with direction to approve the development order. Happens a lot.
Uh, it's just, uh, thank you for explaining that. Uh, a lot of people think it's just as easy as saying no. With, just because we feel like it, it doesn't work that way.
Well, if, if this council, and, and, you know, that's one of my jobs, is to make sure that I listen during these hearings and review, and review the record. And part of the record is the staff report and all of the exhibits, as well as whatever evidence you receive at these quasi judicial hearings, to make sure that there is substantial competent evidence to support whatever decision that this council makes. Because my, my job is try to make sure that, that you don't face the appeal, that you don't have to spend limited public resources in a challenge to a decision, the quasi judicial, quasi judicial decision that you make at the end of these public hearings.
Well, I hope the people that are listening today understand that when developments are brought up, uh, this is, this, all these factors come into when we, uh, vote on it. Thank you.
Uh, on that same topic, Bill, if you could just possibly even explain a little more detail of the rights that developers do have, unique rights in the state of Florida.
Well, there, boy, that, again, that's one of those, those generals.
Just in a nutshell, I, I understand, I just want the public to know.
The thing is, is that if, if a local government inappropriately and without basis, legal or factual basis denies a property owner's rights that they have to do something with their property. And I don't want to use the word developer, I want to use the word property.
Property, right.
Property owner, because that's what the court, that's the term that the courts use. If, if, if you buy a piece of property and you have the right to, to do X with it under the, the, the comprehensive plan and the land development code, and a government body tells you, no, you can't do it, then there's various causes of action that are, that are available. One of them is to challenge, as I was describing earlier. But the other is what could be a lawsuit for damages, a Burt Harris claim or inverse condemnation, that sort of thing. In which, again, the taxpayers bear the burden of that expense, not just the cost of the litigation, but the potential for a judgment against a local government if its leaders, if its elected officials, acting in their quasi judicial capacity, inappropriately apply these standards that are contained in our land development code and our comprehensive plan, which are very detailed. For example, these rezonings that you heard today. There is reference in the staff report to very specific standards that are contained in our land development code that this applicant had to establish factually. You look at these applications, these aren't one paragraph, they're pages and pages and pages. And there's exhibits and there's reports. And those are all considered by your staff, various departments, uh, to make sure that there is compliance, uh, for the protection of not just the rights of, of the, of the property owner, but also the rights of the rest of the citizens of the City of Palm Coast. Because when you buy a piece of property arguably, you know, next to vacant land, you have a reasonable expectation to know that that land is going to be, be developed at some point. It probably will be developed at some point in time, consistent with what you have the ability to look at on the comprehensive plan and the land development code as far as the zoning. And, and with, with the understanding that any property owner, any property owner could come in and ask for a rezoning from X to Y. And then, and then we go through this process, which is a public process, to make sure that, that before there's a decision to change a use on a piece of property, that it meets these tests, these legal tests. And it's fair not just to the property owner, but also to the neighboring property owners.
Thank you.
To add to that, um, we get a lot of comments about a lot of houses being built in Palm Coast. Those land or properties were already zoned. We cannot say, you can't build the house on that property because there's too many houses being built. Is that right?
Well, I think that the, and I, I don't know if this, this is legal. I mean, the, the fact is, if you look at the land development code for the City of Palm Coast, there's a section of it which is the zoning map. If you look at the comprehensive plan for the City of Palm Coast, there's a land use. Now, some properties in the City of Palm Coast, the City of Palm Coast, will never be developed. They're conservation or they're preservation. But the vast majority of the land in Palm Coast that's currently has trees on and is vacant has, has development rights. And so I think the expectation is, well, if it's, if it's vacant, then it's going to stay that way. And that's just not the case. Certain properties right now have development, they have vested development rights. And a lot of times, there's a lot of development that comes to the City of Palm Coast that never gets to the city council. Because they have, they're just building consistent with the vested property rights they already have. Let's, for example, let's say that there's a, they want to come in and build a residential subdivision and they already have the proper zoning for that. They're going to come in and they're going to jump, they're not going to have to get a rezoning. All they're going to do is they're going to do a site plan. That doesn't, most site plans don't come to this, this council. So they have vested property rights and they're just moving forward with that, to use what they already have, what they already own, if you will, which are those vested rights, property rights. Thank you.
Any other questions or any? It's me. There's one thing, actually a couple of things that most of the people out there, when we get elected, because like it or not, we are elected officials, asks us, is for fairness and transparency. Last week, I got a, a few emails, some movies regarding some properties in this array. And they were put on Facebook and other places. It has happened to me. People called me and told me that X property has got this problem and the property have other problems. I go there and inspect it myself, within my limited knowledge of code enforcement. I go there and then I go to Mr. Morton, ask him for permission to go see Mrs. Grossman and ask what's the history of that property. Not just tell what the problem is, it's what's the history on that property. Last week, I gave two addresses that came to me. I gave them to Mr. Morton. And without being specific about those addresses, can you? I don't know if you can, I don't know if it's legal for you or even for us to mention a specific address and as to what was taking place. Because when I understand that the death of this, what we've done to that property, through code enforcement and all other debts that this property has, it's almost over a million dollars. Okay? So this is, what I'm saying is this, with all due respect, I think we should do that. If somebody calls it to our attention, we should do it. But when we're going to put it out there to the public? Let's not just put what the problem is, because we know, unless we don't want to know, what the rest of the story is. Let's tell them what the city has done in that property. Or this way, it looks like we are some kind of vigilantes against our code enforcement, which by the way, I, I think they are doing a very decent job, according to what I've been told, according to what I've been seeing. But this looks bad, not just on us, because we're giving people out there one part of the story. We're giving them what the problem is. Meanwhile, we know what we've been doing and we're not telling them that. I think we should, to be honest with you, okay? It's only my opinion. I, I honestly, I, uh, Mr. Morton, I don't even want you to go into that. But there's always, uh, the second side of the story. So all I ask my colleagues, if you, if you would, you know, I don't tell you what to do. I would ask them, if we have a problem out there, if somebody comes up with a problem, before we put it out there to the public, at least let's give them what's behind this. What's the story? Not just tell them, okay, this gentleman here, he's got all kinds of trash in front of the house, which they do, by the way, and I'm ashamed of that they do. I wouldn't do it, you wouldn't do it, and nobody here would do it, but they do it. Now, what have the city done to it? If the city has done nothing, by all means, we want to go some places to do it. But if the city's done all kinds of things, okay, then let's give code enforcement, okay? Uh, the accolades they deserve for doing so. And I have, I have to remind you that we cannot go out there and say, Mr. X, out of the house. We don't have that power, unless I'm incorrect. I think courts will have that power. Is it, Mr. Ratchman? Only the courts have the power of, uh, evicting somebody or, or?
Well, someone could arguably be removed from possession of their property if they're a tenant and they do not comply with their leasehold obligations. If they're an owner of a property, the only grounds would, and, and, and just, you know, superficially would be if they fail to comply with their mortgage obligations. The bank could come in and do a foreclosure or in the unlikely event that a property owner fails to pay their real estate taxes, in which case ultimately tax certificates are issued and then a tax deed ultimately follows from the tax certificates. And then there can be an action to enforce the tax deed by the purchaser of the tax deed, who, who would then, there would be a transfer of, of title. Those would be the only involuntary, uh, types of, of, of way a government could, or, or in the case of foreclosure or, or eviction, that under, but those are contracts. Those are contracts where a, where a property owner or a property resident, a tenant, makes an arrangement, a quid pro quo, and then violates it. And then there's contractual rights that, that apply. Uh, code enforcement is, is very different, it's very different. Um, pardon me, I'm fighting a cold. Um, code enforcement, there is a process, it is completely statutory. Code enforcement for local governments is kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't. If, if you need code. If, if you need code enforcement, they're your best friend. If you're the recipient of a code enforcement notice of violation, then, then you're, they're your worst enemy. Um, code enforcement, and I've done this for many different local governments, they do their very best to try to make sure that they enforce all the codes equally against all, all violations. In my experience at the city of Palm Coast, that that's very difficult, because you've got a lot of, a lot of single family homes. And it's hard to get out there and see all the violations. There are extreme examples, like in any other, any other matter, where you have outliers. And, um, for example, there's just one parcel, and these are all public records, so I mean, it's, it's not that we're talking out of turn. But there's certain properties where code enforcement will go through the process, the legal process. And when I say process, I mean, the statutes, um, specifically require a local government, like the city of Palm Coast, to give property owners due process before we find them or we put a lien on their house, right? For code enforcement violations. And in some cases, those steps can be delayed by the property owner by filing bankruptcy. They can file bankruptcy multiple times. We have cer- certain situations where a parcel owner will be in code violation and, and they don't pay their mortgage. And so there, there's a foreclosure, and the foreclosure, the bank's about to get the property, they go to the foreclosure sale, the morning of the foreclosure, sellers bankruptcy. And it takes months to, to wind through that process, the bankruptcy, before the bankruptcy is ultimately inevitably dismissed. And then it goes back to the circuit courts, not, not the federal courts, but the state courts for bankruptcy. And the, and the bank has to reset the foreclosure sale. There's an example where that happened twice, that, that process. It took a year, over a year to go through that inevitable delay by this individual, this property owner, taking advantage of his, maybe that's not the right way to say it, but using his rights, it's rights for due process through the federal and the state court system. And in the meantime, here we are in, 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 in the city of Palm Coast, dealing with the, the real world, on the ground problems of having a parcel that's a mess and causing a real problem for the neighbors and for the neighborhood. And the tools that we have are limited, we, we could impose fines. And those fines accrue on a per day basis, a per day basis. And they get huge sometimes with some of these properties. And at the end of the day, all the city could do is then have a hearing, you know, this noticed hearing, and then you can turn those fines into a lien. You can't, under Florida, foreclose on a lien if the, if the, the parcel is homesteaded. So there's, again, more limitations under the state of law, the, the, the law of the state of Florida to, to the question that you asked, Mr. Vice Mayor, about, you know, can, can the city of Palm Coast throw someone out of their house for, for a code violation? Uh, you know, it's so rarely done, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's so rarely done. Usually, and the vast majority of the cases, before that happens, there's a foreclosure. If a person leaves their home, it's because there's a foreclosure, not because a city of X forecloses on a code enforcement lien. So really, the only other thing that, that is, is a tool for local governments in these situations is some self-help remedies, where you go out and you do nuisance abatement, you may have heard that, that, that type of, and, and we have it here in the city of Palm Coast. But it's, it's limited, and it gets to give notice, and it costs the taxpayers money to go out and, and to take these steps. And many times, you, you never recover, uh, the monies that you spent to hire a private contractor to go out and, and deal with some of these horrible situations that code enforcement finds out there. So it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's a difficult process, it's a complicated process. And, um, there's a lot of ways for, for folks to try to take advantage of, of, of their rights um, under federal and state laws. So code enforcement is constantly, they're, the, the director and the staff are constantly trying to, to use the carrot and the stick as best they can to get property owners to, to come into compliance. And when you come to these code board meetings, you know, there's sixty, seventy hearings every, every month for, for the different violations here. And, um, it is amazing, I, and I, little, little advocacy, it is amazing, the, the, the number of compliances that are accomplished and achieved by your code enforcement department. You know, we hear about the extreme examples, which you don't hear about, or the hundreds, if not thousands, of cases that are initiated that are resolved successfully.
Thank you. For the record, let it be known that on this topic, every single word I said was done with all due respect to my colleagues. And I mean with all due respect. I, in no way, I meant to be offensive, disrespectful, or sometimes we agree to disagree, we just do things differently. Do the same, uh, I think the aim is the same. So once again, for the record, I meant no disrespect or was in any way, shape or form trying to be offensive, that to be clear. All right, uh, J L, item, uh, discussion by the city attorney, or matters not on the agenda?
Good Lord, no.
Okay. J M, item, discussion by the city manager, matters not on the agenda?
Yeah, yes and no. Uh, I wanted to thank Mr. Martin again for his question and an apology, I didn't understand, I was thinking the current phase. If you'd like to hang out after the meeting, talk about town center, and, and if you can give me the Flagler example, I'd actually love to have it, just because I said I'm not aware of it, if you want to give me the information. And thank you for teasing out the question a little different, I wasn't thinking.
Yeah.
And what I want to say about that is, just, just to be clear, is, like, we tell staff, anyone can do the job today, what are we doing to do it five and ten years from now? John Nettles would say, I love it, if you don't know where you're going, anyone's gonna get you there. So routinely, when we do almost, almost anything, we're looking at strategic planning that is, that is thinking for the future, five years out, ten years out, are they sometimes gonna be reality? No, but it sets a vision for where the city could go. So again, I was thinking current phase, thank you for teasing out, uh, and, and helping me understand what the question actually was, rather than what I heard the question to be, so thank you. Um, and that's all I've got today, thank you very much.
All right, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the, Mr. McDonald and, um, the Slow Way question, um, and Steve Carr, if they want to meet me after the meeting, I'm here, I'd love to get some more information, I'm able to provide answers, so thank you.
Hey Matt, quickly, do, do we have, uh, do we know when we're gonna bring Slow Drift back to this council?
Uh, no, um, it won't be delayed too long, but I'm currently working with our road engineering team just to, I just asked them to just double check, um, everything we've done and, and our comms, and just when we come back to be able to answer all the questions that were asked and just revalidate the work that, that staff believes was a good, was, was good work and a justification for closing, again, staff's opinion for closing that road.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, item J fourteen, reporting emergency and sole source of purchase for February twenty twenty one.
You should have attached to your report, and I will just call it to your attention, um, any emergency and or sole source purchases that were completed in the last, um, cycle.
Okay, anything else? I'll entertain that motion.
Does he have to read them? Do you have to enumerate them? Okay, then I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Hi, secretary.
If you say hi.
Hi.